Hello, everyone. I would like to call the Long Island Health and Authority Board of Commissioners, ready for a meeting. The order is Tuesday after week fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Let's have a local Commissioner. Commissioner Yarroll.
Commissioner Martin.
Erica Morris, Executive Director.
Molly O'Donnell, Assistant Director.
Kim Daniels, County Supervisor.
Tim Moore, Assistant Agent.
Harold Nunez, Executive Director.
Lauren Sully, Assistant Director.
Jim Cole, Commissioner.
Sarah, Department Safety.
Commissioner Aaron, please.
Commissioner Suzanne Oliver-Gary.
Thank you. Commissioner Diane Christ is absent. Do we have any agenda additions or submissions? I need a vote for the section number seventeen for twenty-four minutes. Do you want a motion?
Move the section seventeen for twenty-four minutes as per procedure.
Second.
So they're seconded by Commissioner Yarroll. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That house is six to zero with Commissioner Chris absent. We are now at public advice, be heard. I saw public out there. I hear them. Seeing no one, I will close public advice, be heard. We are now at all new business. Resolution, LHA twenty twenty-four number twenty-one is to accept an agreement for delegation of activities for the Sweets Door Replacing Project.
Molly? Molly O'Donnell, Assistant Director, once again. This is the CDBG agreement to replace the Sweets doors. Council approved this on the city side October eighth. So I won't repeat any information, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to go over what this grant hack agreement does.
Are there any questions about this agreement resolution? If not, can I have a motion to move it? Moved to adopt? Approved? Whatever it is we do.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councilor, sorry, Commissioner Martin to move LHA twenty twenty-four number twenty-one resolution. Seconded by Commissioner McQuaid. All of us in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That house is two. That house is six to zero with Commissioner Chris absent. We are now on status update. Your federal COVID-19 refunding and expenditures for LHA have been approved.
Hey, Molly, let me start with this one. So Commissioners, this is, I'm going to talk a little bit about this from the ARCA fund, and then I'll walk you into the component in terms of the LHA expenditures on this. So as you know, we brought you several projects on ARCA funding that you can see in the yellow. What I'm going to talk about is what we're seeing in the blue. As we're getting close to the end of the year, under the ARCA rules, you have to have projects contracted by the end of this year. You have until twenty twenty-six to spend it down. If you don't have it contracted by the end of this year, and you're unable to spend it down between the twenty-five and twenty-six, then you have to send money back to the federal government. What we were starting to see is that we had a significant amount of money in ARCA dollars around positions, and those positions would be filled and vacant. And so as I was talking to Peter, we had a lot of concerns just related to the status of those funds, because they didn't have a place to sweep it to. Then basically, we're going to have to send that money back to the federal government. And that's just natural attrition of positions. So we've also been earning interest on the ARCA money, which we can utilize, and it has less restrictions than the actual ARCA dollars. So in doing that, we, today and a couple of weeks ago, we had two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in interest. So we actually used the interest funding to put into the positions, because we didn't have the same restrictions. We then moved the money from the positions into, and we did some other things. So we did fifty-four thousand of interest money for the housing authority cameras we've been talking to you all about. That's because of submitting apartments. And then we had eighty-five thousand for ARCA that's federalized, which the cameras were bid to accomplish that. We then put, we're going to contract with the LHA. The LHA is in a contract with the city for eighty thousand dollars in unit terms. We talked about how we were behind on that. And then we have to have a contract to have a placeholder for accessibility issues at the LHA properties. And so we put six thousand dollars in that. And then, and that changes the placeholder, because once you're contracted, you can sweep into it. We think there's a potential we're going to have another hundred thousand dollars of interest, and we'll need to take that interest revenue and push it into these categories. And then probably January, February of next year, we're sitting meetings out with the departments that have those positions that were funded with ARCA dollars to really make some decisions on where we sit in terms of, do we keep funding in those positions? And that's because they were term-living in positions that we created five years ago, or three years ago. There were five-year positions. As you start getting closer into the deadline, you have less time on those positions, which means it's more unlikely that people will actually apply for them, because it's only, you know, right now it'd be a two-year job at best, and as you move in, then because of one-year job, and then it, you know, less than a year. And we're already seeing challenges in filling those positions. So the sweep categories that we're going to be utilizing for ARCA funds will be the LHA accessibility, and then some of the unit terms ongoing. That way, we don't have to send any money back, because those are all eligible expenses.
Sure. Well, that's the plan. So I think I'll just kind of highlight our progress that we've made. Just to clarify, the yellow means that we've completely expended the funds, already expended the funds. This pinkish-orange is we've encumbered the funds through a contract, either a contract to LHA, which is an IGA, which is one method, or it's got underway completely with a vendor. And then the blue is obligation in progress. So this is, you're going to see, we're doing this summary now, because at our November nineteenth meeting, both on the council side and city side, you'll see several agreements come through uncovering the rest of these funds. And then this is our unfunded for project sweep in the, this is a little testy, with no color yet. So that's costs that we have lined up and that we could use once the funding is available. So I think overall, what I'll show you is kind of our progress since we started spending this money in twenty twenty-two. We have expended, oh, I wish I had an expended total, but in total, we've got about nine point five million dollars of work, the vast majority of which has already been accomplished. The expenditures has been completed. So I just want to highlight this for you all to know that we've been working hard to get it spent and appreciate the allocation, and thank you to, it took a lot of team members to make this happen, because there's a lot from start to finish. So I think I'll just hold the rest for questions if there are any, because Harold's description is what you're going to see come in here the next month.
I do have a question from Harold, and maybe I missed it when you were giving the update. Which positions are you talking about?
They're not for the housing authority. So we funded some, there's one position in youth services. There's one position in community and neighborhood services, and there's one position that's in employees' department. I think those are the three that happened. They can't keep them filled. So one was like Alejandro that then went into a permanent position. And so the challenge is, they can't keep them filled, they haven't been filled, and it's becoming more difficult to fill because of term limit.
And I was able to just filter to see what we have expended. Of the nine, nine point five we expect to spend, we have spent eight point seven.
Right. Glad you're doing that, because we don't know what's going to happen to money. Is moving.
Yeah, so we have, we have all the money for ARCA, and that's why we're adjusting it, so we don't have to send anybody.
Good. So that was just an update, but we need to approve and adopt the twenty twenty-five property agency budgets. The first one is, what we need budget presentation.
Okay, so we will start, some of the challenges LHA has is revenue uncertainty, mainly because we have HCV vouchers, which are portable. So this year, we did decide to budget a portion of that, because we do have some properties that have a lot of HCV vouchers, portable vouchers. And if we budget just a portion of that, it might also be able to do items in the budget that we normally can't, like landscaping, things that we haven't been able to take care of at these properties. So we did budget a little on the HCV voucher side. Developer fees too, that's really all dependent on cash flow from all the properties. So depending on how good the properties do, we get developer fees. But that can change depending on how it works. So we have some currently in development that give you a schedule that when you're going to get developer fees. But if construction goes longer or anything like that, the developer fees come in at a different time. So we budget as best as we can with what we think is coming in, and have to kind of navigate that as we go through the year. As revenue comes in and everybody searches for.
So what Kendra's talking about with the vouchers, one of the things we've talked about, because really there's a hedge that we're looking at. So we talked about how many vouchers do we have in the property? How often do those vouchers turn? And then we said, what was it, thirty percent?
Yeah, I think we did like a thirty percent.
And so then we took thirty percent of the total, which gave us seventy percent hedge. And so that's why I think in the year, you see a lot of times that the properties perform above budget. It's because we didn't have enough experience to understand how to hedge it as we took this over. We're now feeling a little bit more comfortable with it, saying, okay, we'll hedge at this level, but we still have that flex. That way, if people do move out with vouchers and move to another location, it doesn't cause a bust in the revenue side of the budget. So it's a conservative estimate on what we're looking at with the vouchers.
We have inflationary costs, like everyone. Our repairs are definitely seeing an increase in cost. We're going to have the increase similar to the city with the benefits, which is about a twelve percent increase in benefits. We're also seeing utility increases anywhere from three point five percent to ten percent depending on the utility.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is that because of our rise in utility rates, or is it from another reason? Do utilities play a part?
Most of these are a rise in our utility rates plus whatever Excel does. And usually, we don't know what Excel's going to do, so we kind of budget. And usually, it's on the higher percent, just to be safe. But most, I usually get the increases from utility, from coworkers, so they let me know that the utilities are going to increase, and then I take that against what's happened in this year. A lot of the times, we have to also figure out, like this year, we had a couple of months where there was a lag in water because we were trying to get irrigation repairs. So I have to be careful, because this year, we may not have the irrigation repairs, and our waters may be higher than it is this year. So it's taking that engagement to see what it's, what the utility is going to be.
Thank you.
You're also managing weather. So, you know, this year, our electric expense is probably going to be higher than our gas expense, because it's been warmer this year. And so your, the other variables, weather, just like your house. So our utility bills are kind of flexed, just like our utility bills we do at home, based on what the environmental conditions are.
We are budgeting at a hundred percent of market by a hundred and one, and then our benefit increase is about approximately twelve percent. So the rent increases for twenty twenty-five, and these are for federally assisted properties. So the Hearthstone and Lodge, they are funded fully by HUD vouchers. We did a Lodge increase of four point two seven percent, and Hearthstone of five point one five percent increase. This is all on HUD. So it's all dependent on if they have the budget to fund those increases. And last year, we didn't even get the contracts renewed until like May, April or May, which was almost six months after the contract expired. So in these circumstances, sometimes LHA has to fund these two properties until the contract is approved by HUD, and we get the additional subsidy money.
You get, you give back what you've already, how do I say this? So what you funded is in that contract?
As long as they fund it. So like if they give us the five point one five, they'll go back to the contract expired date and let us fill that. Yep. The Sweets Apartments, because we are in a voucher shortfall right now, we did not do an increase to fair market for the Sweets. And that means going to DOH and asking for an increase. And then what usually happens is LHA matches that increase that DOH approves. But because we're in a shortfall, we kept the studio apartments and one and two bedrooms at the same level as twenty twenty-four. Realize, again, these don't affect the individuals at the property unless they're in the interest. So usually, it's all subsidy-driven as well, unless they're in the interest. And then we have Zinnia, and there's an error here, because I just found out that the, in their portfolio, they had estimated the vouchers would be one thousand six seventy-five, but they will be higher than that. They're going to be one thousand eight twenty-three. We received the DOH contract today. So those would be, they're currently budgeted at sixteen seventy-five, but that's going to be an increase that Zinnia is going to have in their portfolio.
Now, Zinnia is a little, I think, remember, with Zinnia, it's slightly different type of property, because we're not the owner of the property.
Right.
And so we're contractually obligated to manage it. So when you think of the reserve requirements in Matthew units and things like that, that doesn't necessarily fall on us. That will fall on Element, who is the owner of the property.
So do they pay you the management fee?
They do, they pay eight percent.
Eight percent?
Yeah. So the next is the rent increases outlined for our other properties. Right now, we are doing a five percent rental increase for the rest of the properties. Now, the five percent is the tax. If they're already currently at tax credit rent, and tax credit in April only increases three percent, that's all they would see. They would only see a three percent, because we can't go over the tax credit limits. But if they are below that, then they would see the five percent. So it could be anywhere from one to five percent, depending on where they're at, depending on what the tax credit is going to increase. Tenants will get, I mean, everybody is waiting for the budgets to get approved, so they can actually start doing their sixty million certifications and let people know what this increases. And after that, after approval, we'll give a notice to the tenants to know that the increases have to be.
And then we typically, we typically circle in on coffee and conversations, and have the conversation every year. Here's what the rent increase is going to be. Now, that doesn't mean that it's absolutely going to be yours, yours is specific to you, and you need to meet with property managers to see what that's going to be and when it's going to start, based on what we have to recertify. And so you have to tell them what the highest is, what the highest increase is going to be, but then it's going to vary by every person, depending on where they are.
And if they have a voucher or if they have.
Yeah.
One thing I will say is that all of these are usually due to investor by anyone first. So the investor could come back with questions or issues or items that they may want us to increase or exclude. We haven't really ran into that in years we've been doing, but we do give this to them, and they could come back and say, you know, we don't want that in our budget type of thing. The more expenses they have, the better, because it just puts them in a situation to get more tax credits. Okay, this is the twenty twenty-five fair market rent standards. Based on our admin plan, so what we're asking you to approve is the twenty twenty-five standards. However, there's kind of an exception to that rule. Based on our admin plan, the admin plan states that we can't change, we can't lower or reduce the fair market rent for individuals already in half-contract. So if they're in a half-contract today, they will be at the twenty twenty-four fair market rent, because that is higher than the twenty twenty-five. However, if somebody loses their voucher and has somebody else come in, or if it's a PBB, and they lose, and somebody comes in, then they would get the new rate, the twenty twenty-five rate. So it's only for new half-contracts that occur. We are in the process of reviewing the admin plan to see if we can have a more tiered approach for when we get into shortfalls like this, because there is an option that if you feel like you need to reduce that, you have to get a notice for at least a year to the tenants that have a half-contract, so they have time to adjust, you know, and make sure that they can support and accommodate the additional rent increase they might incur. But right now, our admin plan as of today says that we would not change if the fair market is reduced. To give you an update on HUD, I wanted to do that too. So we were to meet with HUD a week and a half ago, and only our finance guy showed up, the actual HUD shortfall team member did not, because she was having power outages. But we did submit all of our information for the shortfall. We submitted the application. It sounds like she's prepping for the December order for us, and I emailed her today to kind of get a status update, to ask what's the status, what exactly are you submitting on our behalf? But some of the things they actually had us walk through was, and have Harold certify is, one, we've stopped. Vouchers, we're stopped, you know, we're not adding new vouchers. We haven't been adding vouchers since June of twenty twenty-three, because we were going to be allocating these into Village on Main. The other thing is that we're not absorbing vouchers. Again, we have been absorbing vouchers since February of twenty twenty-three, so we're good there. There's other things I thought, if you have people that are moving out, that you're not letting them move out to a higher paid fair market rent. So there's certain things that we have to certify. They also did ask us if, if you had to, if we can't give you the money, and you had to pull people off the program to get back out of shortfall, how many people would it be? Based on our admin plan, we have to take the people that have been on the program the longest and go down. And then there's some exceptions. You can't include like BASH vouchers, which we don't have, PBB vouchers. You have to exclude the elderly and the disabled. So there's certain preferences that are out of the picture. It was sixty-six people that we would have to kick off the program if, if, if that came to where it was. And that, we had, this was kind of, we've had people on this program for thirty-three years. But this was going to hit people that had been on the program, anywhere from two years to thirty-three years, with the sixty-six people back that aren't elderly or disabled. And that was just kind of the first glance. You kind of have to go deeper, and you have to look at anybody in their household as well. So if there's somebody in their household, like a child that's disabled, you would have to take them off. So there would have been, so this was kind of just a high-level review, but if that was, we'd have to do a deeper review too on those, to see what members are also being supported by the household.
We have heard other agencies are receiving shortfall funding, so we haven't heard anybody not get it that has asked for it yet, from the ones that we've talked to.
Yes. And I did feel much better. Our finance guy said there was one that had a ten million dollar shortfall.
Oh, wow.
But it's a really big agency. So, you know, it's an agency that has a lot of vouchers.
The email traffic looks really positive, based on what she communicated. So when she missed a meeting, it was like, hey, just give me your stuff, I'm going to start processing it for December, and then we need to have a meeting. So it looks like, I think we're in a positive spot right here, based on what we're doing. The other piece in this is, you know, so we were excluding our project-based vouchers, actually dumped them back in to the shortfall.
Yeah, they did ask, based on your PBBs, where do you want them placed? Like which ones are ready? And I said, well, construction is done. If we can, we want to add all eighteen in November for Village on Main. So they'll plug that into the tool, it'll show us what our shortfall is between the three orders for the end of this year, twenty twenty-five, and into twenty twenty-six, we had a shortfall, it was about a million and thirty. And that's what I gave them as my analysis. So.
So here's what happens with the shortfall. So when they fund the shortfall, they then give you that money next year. So it adds to the money that you're given, and then you get that in perpetuity. And so what was interesting in the conversation that we had with Yarroll, there are some agencies that, in my mind, play a really dangerous game, and that they always manage to shortfall, because that's actually how they're creating additional funds coming in. The danger in that is if Congress doesn't appropriate the funds here in particular at that point, which we haven't seen recently, but I remember about ten years ago, there was a big, it was before I died, it was all over the news, how they weren't going to fund it for the vouchers. So we obviously don't do that. There are places that do it, you know, and then when you get into the reserve ratio, that was another eye-opening moment for you, because you need to be at point four or four.
Four percent.
You need to be at four percent. If you're over four percent on your reserves, then you don't give. They reduce your shortfall funding. And so we're going to have to work at what is the right target that you need to be at on your reserve level, because you don't necessarily want to be at four, because if something happens and you go over four, then it creates an issue. And so we're going to have to start doing some analysis to go, do we want to be at three, do we need to be three and a quarter? Because you get penalized if your reserves are over four percent. And it's crazy math to me, but.
And it can change from month to month, because the two-year tool, one month, can change your outlook. But their two-year tool will light up in red if you've got problems. So I mean, the way that, whoever structured that, and it's actually quite comical when you start the two-year tool, they have little funny jokes as you go along, like HUD was, whoever made, built the, built this two-year tool, was made little funny jokes as you start to establish your, you know, you're almost there, little tickets.
Here's the thing, when she says it changes month by month, it changes month by month. And so part of the challenge on the shortfall is, you know, we talked to you all last time about the twenty twenty-four numbers going up dramatically, and then they reset into twenty-five, which is what she just talked about. It also depends on when the people recertify. And so part of our problem was, we had a lot of people recertifying at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of the year, wasn't it?
It actually, so it's pretty steady. What was happening is my data was originally taking the actual current research date. the actual current research date, which could have been interim. It wasn't necessarily their annual. So then when I looked at the annual, it was pretty steady month to month. But with Village on Main, if we add all 18 vouchers in one month, you have all 18 of those changing, you know, being recertified in one month, which could completely change, you know, your monthly data.
Do you ever feel secure in your funding?
No, no. No.
Yeah, so like if you, like the 18, we want the 18 to go in now because it's later in the year. Because if you wait, the 18 goes into January and you get into this boat, then, well, six and a half does another, right? If it goes in in January, you know you're in the hole. If something goes up dramatically and then goes down. If it's at the end of the year, you may think you're fine. And then you get to October, November and you're like, oh crap, we're not fine. And so, you know, which way? The best way, it's just, it's a bit of a, this two-year tool is, it changes month to month.
So new positions and changes. Positions being added is a new senior account position. We are, with the property increases, our bandwidth is just getting really tight. And we also want in the accounting position to be able to not just do the monthly reports that you have to do to the investors, but also do data and management reports for the agency as well. So you have the finance side of it and then you have the management side of it. With Xenia coming on board, with Ascent being, starting construction, it just, I need new people. And the mini hats that we wear. So that's going to be added. We're adding a new maintenance tech position to support Village on Main Briarwood. And the reason we're doing that is we want to be able to have the maintenance supervisor be a supervisor and be able to manage the vacancies in the unit terms and then be that support person for them to chip in wherever he needs to. And maybe it's the big projects. We are asking that approval to move forward early to use fund balance in 2024 to start hiring these positions in 2024 instead of waiting until 2025. The senior accountant position, based on, I mean, by the time we figure out how we can create the separation of duties and how we have to divide our individual tasks, we're thinking November, December timeframe. And that would be about $28,500 for 2024. And then the maintenance tech one position would be about $24,172. And that salaries, benefits, and realize these benefits, we have to, unfortunately for LHA, we have to benefit as if they're going to come in and have a family rate. So they could come in and have a single rate, which is like $15,000 difference benefit-wise for us. So we budget at the high side. And so it could be less and then just a computer. So total fund balance is 52,746 is what we're asking to move forward with. And then the budget increases and decreases kind of were already explained in the first slide, which is the 12% benefits and then 100% of fair market. Because we normally were at 101%, but we just didn't feel the budgets could.
Is that, that's not a full-time position?
No, it's only for two months.
This is only for two months. Yeah, this is just, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is just to support them coming in early in 2024 because they're not currently in it.
So they're included in the 25 budget. I talked to you all the last time about funding it now. We did this before on another position. These two specifically were a critical mass. I mean, you know, part, one of the things that I was thinking third is that if we didn't have the ability to do this, I was seriously considering funding an assistant manager at a property because this is now starting to show itself to be a big issue. So I was preparing myself to make some pretty tough decisions with this budget just because where we're sitting with these two, you obviously see we're providing unit turns and things like that. The one-time dollars we're bringing in is the baseline on unit turns. And then by adding, you know, having a supervisor in that position, then it increases in capacity for unit turns. Part of the contracts, we're also looking at custodial contracts as well as unit turn contracts. It'll be on call. And so part of the work Kendra's talking about is doing the financial evaluation to determine what's the ROI on having a maintenance staff person come in and clean and turn the unit versus bringing in a contractual custodian group to clean it and maybe a contractor to come in and turn it based on the amount of time that it's going to take versus the revenue that you potentially lose. And so it's going to give us the opportunity to make some real-time decisions. So what we're hoping to do with this is minimize cost and maximize revenue.
So when you say a city position and an LHA position, does that mean, for example, the senior accountant of the city, that comes out of the city budget?
No, what it is, is it's a city position, but it's in the IGA.
Okay.
So what that means is LHA still pays for it, we get billed.
Okay.
So we're on the city side, but we build LHA for those positions.
You'll see, you'll see an expense in the city's budget for the position, but you'll see a revenue line item matching it. And then on the LHA, it's all internal to the LHA because we moved all of our finance component into the city side.
We did talk to the city's budget group and accounting group to make sure just this, we'll be committing the revenue to the city by adopting the budget and also with the LHA that we'll do for 2025.
And then we get into the property budgets. I know you guys got the long detailed list and you got the short. This is kind of more of the summary list. This will kind of give you an idea. Down here is what revenue, if we have, if we could give none of our HCV vouchers poured out, this is the amount that we've really had a budgeted for down here is the $18,000 budgeted for some. But that's what, this will show down here to show kind of what the ending balance would be. And then we did what we could at what properties we could. We did start meth and capital reserve accounts last year or two years ago. And I put what I can depending on their budget. And that's, that's all outside of, if we have expenses, we have a boiler replacement, for example, at the suites. Or if we have something like that and we can't put money in these reserves, then we can't put money in reserves. But it is budgeted as doing so if we have the money. And so I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Can you go back? So a couple of things on Ask a Meta campus. You see the developer fee repayment. That's because we're at the timeframe. Is this the one where we're at the timeframe where we have to start paying developer fees or something? Or is there a different?
Which one? Ask a Meta's senior?
Yeah.
Yeah, so senior, we haven't been adequately to pay the deferred developer fees back. I'm hoping this year we are going to have some cash flow to do that. So what we're trying to do is budget for as much as we can in the budget. By now, we should have probably already paid back $100,000, $125,000, but we haven't been able to do so. And partially because in these properties that are resyndicated, we kind of inherit their rent already established. So if their rent already established is not at the tax credit rent, then that rent just moves into that property. And so with both Village Place, we have an issue and we're going to inherit that. But luckily, we got PBB vouchers in there. AMSA, we don't have any PBB vouchers. So we inherited, if tax credit rent was 850 and we're giving 600 for this person, we're losing that 250. And so to get up to that tax credit rent is taking some time, which is why we haven't been able to pay developer things back to LHA because there's no more cash flow.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize the developer fee is being paid from the property to LHA since we were the developer there.
So part of it is, remember, some of you may remember a couple of years ago, when talking about how they were just putting people in units to get people in, not necessarily at the accurate rents. That's the gift that keeps on giving because it's exactly what Kendra was talking about. And the only way you can get out of that is either through people moving out or rehousing. And until someone new comes in, you can't really get into it. And then in certain properties, it becomes a fundamental issue because of income qualifications and the rent. And that you'd rather have somebody come in at a slightly lower rent than have a vacant unit. We're managing that a little bit better now. You know, I think we're going to keep paying for that for another seven years probably of what happened and how they were putting people into those units. On Ask a Meta's neighborhood, you see where she's starting to hold $50,000. There's a balloon payment on that property when they built it. So obviously, we're going to be looking at that for some type of resyndication going forward in order to deal with that issue.
So 2028 is year 15. And so we had plans to start capital syndication at that time too, but CHAPA also doesn't always fund right at year 15. They want to see more years under the belt. We were able to kind of talk our way out of that on Village because it skipped a cycle and just did a critical update. So a lot of it hadn't been touched since 1990. So that's something we'll look at to see if we have some extenuating circumstance where we can try and request it earlier.
And we also probably request to reappoint as well if we feel like that's going to be the better situation.
Probably.
Yeah. Because I don't think I'm going to make, I'm not going to get to the balloon payment by just $50,000 a year. It's not going to happen. It's about $800,000 is what the balloon payment is.
It is?
Yeah.
Yeah, wow, it's crazy doing that money.
Yeah, that's going to be my question. Why didn't you do a report?
Yeah, so.
It's the second property. So remember, we had one on, they did the same thing on Briarwood. They also did a loan payment on that property complex.
So we can go, do you guys have any questions on these ones? Or I'll just skip to the LHA general fund? So the LHA general fund has a couple nuances happening in it. Last year, what we kind of funded was, we funded this, because we had the issue with the suite security at the end, we decided about building attendance for both of the best platform and moved to actual security contract, which is way more expensive. And so LHA did fund out of their general fund that security contract for 2025. We have moved that entire contract to the suites. We were able to do that. Another thing that's happening in 2024 is LHDC paid a corporate management fee to LHA for development purposes. But since LHDC is kind of moving out of that platform and going more towards a donations and we provide services like via mobility contract and stuff like that, what LHDC will be funding is amounts that we can't pay or we don't think we can get funding for for the Hearthstone Lodge. So we have some salaries and benefits that aren't fully funded at the Hearthstone Lodge. And so LHDC will be funding that gap for those properties. The other thing is, so in 2025, we just have reoccurring revenue, which is our maintenance fees and our snow bill. And between 2025 and 2024, you can see we had $639,000 in 2024, but we have 150,000 coming in. So we've lost that. We've gained another property in 2025, that Xenia, which is 8%, which is actually going to be higher now since they are actually getting 1823 instead of 1675. So that will increase. And then the resource specialist, LHA also funded out of there. It was partially funded by the Hearthstone Lodge, but the remaining property is LHA funded. And so that is also now removed out of the properties. So the LHA resource specialist is getting paid for by the properties and not LHA. So that's another thing that we moved out of the budget, which enables us to add the senior account. It enables us to move Patrick to a more supervisor role. And then I'll let, I know Harold wants to talk about it. Yeah, it was awkward.
So on this one, I want to draw your attention to the reoccurring revenue line item. So when you look at 639 versus 606, so out of the 639, take 150,000 out of that. So you're 539, you're at 480,000 because of the 606 that we have in 25, we pulled 150 from LHDC out. So the key point in this is that the revenue from a recurring perspective is increasing. And that's related to the progress that we're bringing online and the work that we're doing. So while it doesn't look great, it's actually, we're resetting the budget as we're going through. And so when you look at this total, scratch everything you know about how we budget on the city side because it is distinctly different on the housing authority side because most housing authorities use the developer fee revenue and fund balances to offset their ongoing expenses. Remember, we're trying to reset that too. So what we've done, when you see the bottom line and the fund balance needed in 905 and 24 versus 903, put into perspective that we've added a maintenance technician, we've added an accountant, then we've added an assistant director. So when you look at those expenses, that's a pretty significant shift financially to where we were. Had we not added those positions which we needed, you know, the amount we need for fund balance would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of 650,000. But we have to have those positions in order to keep moving. And then the next slide is the fund balance side.
No, next slide is LHDC.
The best panel.
Yeah, this is just kind of next to this.
So here's the fund balance side. And so when you see how we're utilizing fund balance, you know, what I want you to look at is, you know, the bottoms piece in red. So you see ascent management fee coming in and you see the adjusted ending fund balance. And so if you remember, what, three or four years ago, what was the ending fund balance? About a million and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the adjusted ending fund balance for 2025 is now $3 million. So we increased the fund balance on an annual basis. So what I'm looking at then is, so we did a couple of things. So for the first time ever, we created a 22% operating reserve, which is essentially a 3% operating reserve. Meaning if all revenue stopped, we would dig into this, which is highly unlikely that that'll ever happen. But that becomes more of a restricted fund balance that we're using. So then this becomes the liquid fund balance that we have available to us in terms of what we could use it on for significant expenses. I want you to look around 2028. We need another project to come online in 2028. As we're looking at that fund balance, my goal for us is to, and this is probably almost an unattainable goal, but I mapped something out with Kendra to where what I want to do is actually reduce the amount we're drawing down the fund balance annually by at least 200 balance bonds. So that would be next year, we're at 700. So that would be next year, we're at seven hundred, the year after that, we're at five, the year after that, we're at three, the year after that, we're at two. And we're balancing with ongoing revenue now. I say all of that because I do think it's achievable. But when we look at our next project, and I talk to you all about this, we're going to have to look at a project that may be a little bit different for housing authorities. And what I found out from more is, this is actually what Boulder Housing Partners, this is what they do in their projects. Not that we would do it exactly like they do. They build affordable housing, but then they actually build market rate housing as part of the project. And so when you do that, your market rate housing starts spitting off cash. So everybody goes, how Boulder Housing Partners so solid? That's what they're doing. And I don't know if the county commissioners have made a decision, but I do think that if we get a direct allocation, we do probably need to look at a project that has affordable and attainable rental housing that's income qualified. The attainable housing actually starts spinning, spinning off cash at a higher rate than traditional affordable housing projects. We will never eliminate that gap if all we're doing is building affordable housing. We've got to find a way to bring attainable housing into that business. If we're able to do that, I think what I just described is definitely we can achieve it by twenty twenty one.
So.
But there's a lot of things that now have to start coming into play.
So the compensation you had with council about the parcel land that you had and you wanted to know what we wanted to build on it? And we gave you basically the developed project on it? Would that work with attainable?
Sleep, maybe not, and that's also got a first right of refusal on it. What I'm thinking about is, I talked to you all about a partnership potential near here. But it doesn't need to be there. That's the thing that we learned in the modeling, or it could almost be anywhere. But if you can go into that, when we need the direct allocation of the funds, this is what I've been saying to the county and the county commissioners, is that if we have the direct allocation of funds, you can do either a revenue bond or a certificate of participation for, the building itself becomes the primary activity at a hundred percent. What you need for the direct allocation from the one you're funding to do is actually meet your debt ratio probably at one point two five or one point three. That then lets you issue the debt at a more traditional government rate, which is, you know, four months ago, if the government rates were, I mean, if the traditional revenue bond was like at six, six and a half percent, the government rate we've been able to get in the crisis, the crisis out force was about four to four and a half. So if you looked at fifty basis point reduction that just occurred, now we could potentially be looking at a four percent interest rate. And we don't have to live all the risks. It's a split risk with the developer version informing the full risk in how you structure it. And so that changes the economics a lot in terms of what the revenue potentially is. But it's got to take a project like that to, to make this happen. But the good news is, you know, I want to take you to the administrative expenditures that you see just below where it's quite one point two million. Kendra's escalating this. I want to decrease it. So every time we can decrease it, we're increasing fund balance. So from a fund balance perspective, we're in a pretty good spot. But we have to make that twenty eight mark on the project.
Which would start again twenty five.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we even got our more staff.
Well, and I would say in that scenario, like, the expenses may not decrease, but it's the revenue that we want to increase to reduce the budget.
Yeah, it's where we're pushing, yeah. There's mine.
Somebody have any questions?
You turned off the sweep.
I know. Well, I know. And it put a pretty slide at the end. It, it looks like.
Are there any questions from commissioners?
Well, I know you have up there snow removal. Do we have, is that up there? Will we be able to do that this year?
I mean, it's now before the first set of files.
Well, and also I would say in, in the, in how I did the snow removal budget, last year it was a little different because we were adding trucks. This year, we weren't adding trucks because we had already saved a prior year for that. That in this budget, I did add, I just don't know how it would look, but if, if they did need a tent to come on board, that's, that's kind of how I budgeted the snow removal if, if a tent was needed.
Yeah, so that's actually a good point. So we talked to you all, they didn't have any equipment. So now they have both trucks.
Just one.
Just one.
The other was.
We have to look at a different one. Wasn't the one that you thought would give us?
Okay.
So.
Not as worth though, many.
Oh, okay. So what's behind it?
They can use.
We're going to answer those.
Yeah, so what's behind it is we're, we're buying the trucks with the depreciated value from the city. And then we're depreciating it over time so that when it comes time to replace it, then we can buy a new truck for them. So they're actually getting equipment now versus not having equipment. This is a good point. Any, I'm looking at the sidewalk issue. Want to tour over there?
Anyone have any questions?
Anyone question this?
No.
We have motion.
Move the LHA twenty twenty four dash twenty two.
So that's the resolution for the payment standards. I think we would want a motion for the budget for the world.
Oh, okay. And that's the. Budget.
For the LHA twenty twenty five budget.
I move the twenty twenty five budget. Uh, budget.
It's an extra.
Need to have that.
It's in.
It's in the presentation. So if you're, if you're moving a whole kit of people, then it's included.
Okay, so the motion to move the LHA twenty twenty five budget was made by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Nargill? No, Martin, sorry. All those in here? The public. I passed the sister. So now we're going to go on to the LHA twenty twenty four twenty two resolution. And this is to, for the twenty twenty five payment standards for housing authority's voucher program. We went through that, right?
Yeah, so that was described in the slides.
Yep.
It's accepting the twenty twenty five fair market rate at one hundred percent with the EBITDA notes attached.
So can we have a motion for twenty twenty four dash twenty two?
So I'll move the resolution, LHA twenty twenty four dash twenty two.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey, seconded by Commissioner McQuaid to move resolution, LHA twenty twenty four dash twenty two. All those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed? That passes six to zero with Commissioner Chris absent. And we're now at LHA twenty twenty four twenty three. This is an authorization to open an interest bearing bank. What is C-Safe?
So C-Safe is actually an account the city also uses. So we do have a lot of money currently right now sitting in both our operating and I just moved some to a money market until we could get this approved. But what we would like to do is move it to C-Safe, which is a more liquid asset that has, and basically it combines your money with a bunch of other government entities. And it's also very liquid. We didn't want to move to a CD because a CD, you can be penalized if you, if you need the funds soon. So C-Safe seemed to be the best option and what Jim Golden recommended. But we have to do a resolution. We got all our accounts set up. I was ready to transfer the money. And they asked for a resolution and realized I didn't have that signed yet. So that's what this is. And, and technically, this could, right now it was, I think, at five percent interest. And so if we put a good chunk of money in there, we could get the two hundred thousand that he's talking about.
Secrets.
Yeah.
I don't know, we, we too.
So now that, yeah, it's five percent, we'll get close.
So this is a, an online virtual?
It's money that either Harold or Molly can transact to, to C-Safe. And then you can automatically transfer it back if you need to without penalty. So if it's funded, we can sue them.
Cities use this, so it meets the standards that we have to in terms of investments. It's not market investments, we, this is a pretty conservative investment.
Okay, can I have a motion for LHA twenty twenty four twenty three? I'll move LHA twenty twenty four dash twenty two. Second, been moved by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferrey, seconded by Commissioner Diogo. To move LHA twenty twenty four dash twenty three. Is there any discussion on this since we moved, have my show presentation? Oh, that sounded bad. I did.
We're happy to. We're glad we're showing a present.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes six to zero with Commissioner Chris absent. You're now on development, okay? This is, uh.
Now take this one.
Okay.
We have had quite a few weeks. I see it on our faces a little bit. It was a big success. We're ready for next. Okay. September twenty seventh, we closed a cent. And construction started the following Monday. We closed it at about six PM Friday. We had our bankers were all East Coasters, so they were working on this, doing final authorizations about eight PM on Friday night. We needed to do that before Monday, the thirtieth, so that we avoided our rate lock expiring and changed all the financials. We, which was huge. So we were under construction. We were talking about a ribbon cutting for, or I should say groundbreaking, coming in November, so that will all be coordinated with the council's schedule. And you'll not be invited, of course. And then on same day, we received our certificate of substantial completion on our building permit for Village on Main, which we needed also by that Monday, or else we faced a downward adjuster from our tax credit investor. We could have, you know, worked with our investors as much as possible, but we knew we could make it, so, so we agreed to it and we did. We are just doing our final punch items and final furniture deliveries and final cleanup now. So we'll also be doing, it might be a bit busy maybe a week or two in November where we're going to do a grand opening for Village. It looks beautiful. The residents are generally so happy. There's always going to, we say this every time, there's always adjustments to change. But overall, the message we've heard is we were so worried about this, but look, it looks amazing and they're happy. So that is a big, big one as well. The following Tuesday, October first, Zenia opened and our first thirty out of fifty five.
Fifty two units out of fifty five are already listed within two weeks.
Within two weeks. So they moved in like thirty the first day and then some rounds up until just to present. So that was a big deal as well. It was a big lift and it was a true, you know, we've talked about LHA trying to get our development ramped up for the past four years. And there's a point where, okay, we can, we can get the developments done, which we have been, but then it transitions to operations. And you better be able to walk the walk and talk the talk if you're going to say that we're able to do all this development and be the phoenix rising in the housing authority community. And so having Zenia leased up so successfully really was a testament to that. And we have so many, I mean, there's so many things that we have taken from that experience that we're going to carry through as all of the other new developments as they come online, transition to operations too. So super proud of the team. It was a hard one because we have not done a lease up since Fall River, which none of the current staff were around for. So it was a big feat, so good job operations. And then this is not specifically on a housing authority, but just, it's in the same vein and generally the same team members. We closed on the land transition over to vertical for the city's homeownership project, a hundred eighty five units. We did that on Friday. Was it Friday? Thursday?
Thursday. It was Thursday, one minute before the title company said we can't do it.
Yep, signed everything a minute before. So that was from September twenty seventh to October tenth, which is crazy. That's a big portfolio to take on for a large housing authority. So I'm just super proud of the team that really booked it to get this done because these are the culminating projects we've been working on for four years.
Yes.
So.
So, yeah, so, you know, so here's the, the backstory that is, A, they all do phenomenal work. They went to Housing Colorado last week.
Wednesday. So we closed this.
They were closing a lot of, people were there and we were on film Friday. Everybody was going up to them going, how's Walmart doing this? How's Walmart, Housing Authority doing this? And it's just a testament to all the folks in this room who knows who are in this room. You know, Katie and Katie Lee and, um, yeah, Katie.
There's, there's a lot.
There's a lot of people.
The state of the nation.
And Christie and everyone else. I think, you know, you talk about large, you can talk about large housing authorities and you talk about what people are able to do. It's not about size. I know this is about size and this is about the people that you have and the people that are doing the work. And, you know, I would say, we can look at the county and we can look at Boulder Housing Partners. And neither one of them are producing the amount of units and the work this group is doing. And probably a quarter of the staff. And, and so we're lucky to have this entire team and Tim, because Tim's in the middle of all of these helping us solve problems. But it's a good thing and I just want you to know how lucky we are to have these folks here and the commitment and the dedication. And the fact that we knew, well, we need another one in twenty eight and now like, well, that means we need to start it now. Balancing workbook, but nobody flinches. And great staff.
Very impressed. Yeah, I have other mirrors asking me as well.
And Erica keeps us all the same.
Yes. And also, and accounting played a huge role too. We didn't specify that, but they're through every little last drop. So we're going to be closing up some, putting some clothes on to some things through the end of the year. And then twenty twenty five, we're looking towards the twenty twenty eight project, trying to sort out some creative funding opportunities and then starting to dive into the Hearthstone and Lodge to exit that two oh two program.
And you have a Christmas. In twenty twenty.
Yes.
Making of what?
Christmas wanted to. Which means two new prop, two more properties that will be managed.
Oh, another hundred and eighty units.
Yeah, so, and that's an interesting one for those of you, I'm going to put all these here when we did this. For Christmas two, we resp, we. For Christmas two, we re, we negotiated Christmas two, we restructured Christmas one. And so for what, about two and a half million? We're probably getting sixty million worth of value and properties that the housing authority will own. And manage, so then that creates a different ongoing market.
Does that incorporate into this?
By twenty twenty-eight, even without the twenty twenty-eight project to be sorted, we're going to double the portfolio. Just with Chrisman, Ascent, Xenia.
Which I just want to say is crazy. As a developer, it's nuts. And the thing about development is like childbirth. You forget how painful it was and then you're ready for another one.
Then you make the same mistake.
No, there's so many lessons to be learned, is the word I'll say.
And you do carry them forward.
But you do, you learn from those, but then there's always new opportunities for ways to learn others.
So what's behind that then is standard operating procedures. So as they're going through things, you're white papering it. And so that you have a playbook that as you're going into the next one, it's like, okay, we made these mistakes. Let's not make these again. And you're going to make some more. And then you're going to, and so eventually you'll get to the point where it becomes pretty seamless. But yeah, Kendra, we didn't include the revenue for Christmas one and two and twenty-seven, twenty-eight or twenty-eight.
Yeah, no, they're not in our portfolio at all.
Yeah, so that's going to be another revenue increase that we've been projecting twenty-eight.
So I have a question that relates to the properties as well as to the budget. I toured Xenia with Michael Block a couple days ago, and it's impressive. It is, it's a beautiful building. But we started, I started asking him about the cuts that the county was making. And I wonder how this is going to affect your budget specifically for, Michael said that his budget was being cut three hundred thousand. How is that going to affect wraparound services at Xenia? What was the other one? Oh, mental health partners is being cut pretty...
Michael, we have a conversation ongoing as well.
Do you?
Because he wants to look at the projections for the tenant services funding. Partly because Xenia assumed that Medicaid would come in and do reimbursement for some of those on their end, on All Roads' side. And he doesn't have confidence that that's going to come through in the timeline that was anticipated. So we have not sorted any numbers or anything, or even proposed any solutions quite yet. But we do know that what is being looked at with the Prop one B funding is housing-related supportive services set-asides. And so I'm sure that All Roads will be looking to that either through Longmont, if it comes through Longmont, or through Boulder County also.
What we've got to be careful on on this is that if the county cut the funding to All Roads, there's a contract though between Xenia and All Roads. And so, so what we have to make sure of is that All Roads doesn't pass the funding cut down in through the Xenia project where there's, they can't balance their cut organizationally against something that they're contractually obligated to do. So we're going to pay really close attention to the numbers and how they're approaching it.
So does that funding then go to Element since they own?
Element's funding All Roads, right? Through...
Correct. The DOH funds, the supportive services are a combination. There is some DOH, this is going back to reviewing a growth formula from like two years ago. But there's some combination from DOH and then Element funding it through proceeds and that type of thing. We knew that at year six of Xenia, they were going to be coming and seeking out additional tenant services support funding. So the, haven't had the full conversation yet to see with what year is the concern that we'll sort it out.
Okay, just trees.
There is another grand opening that will be scheduled for potentially November. It's going to be busy.
Housepad?
So we're talking about, talked about that with Walker, so he's got a public relations team working on that. Sandy, we're going to be getting with Tom's team on one house pad. So you'll have Village on Main, Ascent, Xenia, and Housepad. Some sort of ribbon cutting or ground by breaking into the next three weeks.
For Xenia as well? Because I was going to ask if we were, if we could do a tour.
Oh, yeah.
But we'll, we'll be, yeah, we're in that. Okay.
We know that they'll have units open that we couldn't be...
Oh, perfect.
You'll be sitting there.
Yep.
So that's it on development updates? That's great. So occupancy report.
So what you'll see, if you look at the occupancy report, this was, pull this together, we have a lot of vacants. This is a culmination of a history of lengthy unit term timelines, meth units that have been ongoing. We are down two maintenance. One was terminated and one was, is on rental. Neither of these were something we were prepared for, you know, looking for. So we have a skeleton crew of three maintenance staff covering ten properties right now, including a brand new one that just opened, new construction, which always has some kinks to work out. And Village on Main also new, technically new construction with a recent location. So I will say they're doing fabulous for the fact that there's only three of them. And that's just really been a team effort between property management and the maintenance, relying on each other, being in constant communication, and just collaborating all day, every day. So I am personally really grateful that you have approved the additional maintenance person in twenty twenty-five and then allowed us to hire that now because we need the support now so that our staff doesn't burn out.
I'm very excited for our...
Yes. So as we get ready for the snow season, we're just planning on a lot of work. I also want to thank you for the additional funds for unit turns because that's really going to help alleviate a lot of the work as well and kind of set that baseline and then new expectation. Because it's been really hard to tease out why it has taken so long to do unit turns. It's not something that we are really, really able to quantify in any meaningful way. So this will sort of set a baseline for us to go going forward and set expectations. And we'll have two new people on the team, which is always invigorating to have new, new people join. So I won't go through all the make readies or all the vacants that are there. But I did just want to point out, just in, in support of your decision, the, something I've added to this is the portable unit vacancy loss. So if you look at that little tiny chart at the bottom right, you know, this is what we're losing in revenue by having these vacants sit for so long and not be evented. And it's $130,000. It's not nothing. So if we can address this going forward, we're also going to be increasing our revenue by doing that. And there are, you know, real consequences to not having units filled at the end of the year. Just another, another thing that we're scrambling to fix before December thirty-first with the additional maintenance and the contracted unit turns.
And LHA also does lose out on management fees because it's based on the money that's brought in. So the $436,000 we've lost to management fees against that record as well.
So really hammering home with the team, you know, there's been a lot of change this year. Getting everybody on board for what's coming in twenty twenty-five, because we're just, we're going to end it with more properties coming through. So we need a strong, core team to lead us into all those changes.
Well, and this is a byproduct of you having a letting, helping us fund an assistant director position because these are things we never had time to get to. So now you're seeing the PTOX starting to...
It's painful, of course, but it's beneficial in the end. And then for property updates, I didn't have anything prepared and ready for the packet, but I'll just go through that really quick. We did a three-day Yardi training with all of our staff a couple weeks ago, which Kendra pulled together with our Yardi rep, covered property management, maintenance, finance, and the HCV staff. It was pretty intense, but it was very beneficial. There was just so much when, when LHA turned to Yardi, there was a lot of functionality that wasn't being utilized. Sometimes that just happens because you start using it and you're just limping along with what you can do and you don't really have the time to look into what's available. So I'm super grateful to Kendra and her team for putting that together because now there's more that we can, we can do, especially with changes coming up with rent cafe and local maintenance. We have a new assistant community manager starting ten twenty-one, the one that might have potentially gotten cut if we didn't fund other things. So she's starting on Monday next week. And she'll be floating from property to property. And I think that that will really help kind of lighten the property management load for a few of our properties that don't have a dedicated person. Second round interviews for our regional property manager are happening next week. We did our first round interviews last week. We have three really qualified and strong candidates. So I'm really excited to hand those duties off once they're hired. Maintenance team update, like I mentioned, we have a vacancy due to a termination. One character will leave the new position he approved tonight. Excited to have a fully built team going into twenty twenty-five and kind of rebuild that group. Housing Colorado was last week. We had a bunch of staff there on the HCI side and LHA. It was really invigorating. It's a nice time to kind of reset and remember why you do this work because it is really hard. Whether you're doing development or operations, it is intensive. Xenia, we have fifty-two tenants out of fifty-five moved in as of October tenth. This was a huge lift for my staff, the property manager, Jana, who single-handedly approved all the paperwork up until the week before everyone started to move in, while also managing the suites. And this is our largest campus in our portfolio now with these two properties that we're managing. Between our staff filling in for the lease-ups, doing, you know, group lease-ups, we had about three to four property managers there every day that we were doing lease-ups to help out. The All Roads staff and MHP doing their voucher meetings that perform lease-up was just, it was amazing the way we worked together because it was a super, I've never done a lease-up. I'm not a property manager by trade. So I felt like I had no clue what I was doing, but clearly we did okay. We beat the record for Bluebird, which Element also owns in Boulder, and we leased up faster than that. So, you know, I think we benefited from their experience there, but we also have just a really killer team. We have our budget sessions for coffee and conversations coming up to talk about rental increases. That's the one today at Fall River. They're looking forward to those conversations and finding out more information. Operational challenges with staffing, but overall, I think the morale is good with our staff. Change is hard and this team is resilient. They've been through a lot since twenty twenty for those who were here and have been on board since then. But you know what, they really have and what you need in this industry is grit and determination. Not going to give up just because it's hard, because it's always hard. But we celebrate our wins when we can and then get back to work. And we had several inspections within the last six months of a couple of properties with little to no deficiencies or issues, which is also very... And then also just want to give a huge shout out to our suites clinician team. We have two clinicians funded through the city that are already there. They've been established there for a few months now. And we are actively recruiting for the third clinician that is LHA-funded. We have seen a very marked difference in the residents after having Rick and Brianna onsite. It has made a world of difference for the residents. They have someone to talk to, someone to help with issues. The collaboration between MHP, the clinicians, and our onsite staff has been amazing. Mercy, reduced calls for service, and just have, they have way more support. And so if you were ever questioning if that was the right decision, it absolutely was. And I hope we can expand and do more as we go.
Yeah, yeah, you're still operationalizing how we take your goals and then about housing and these issues. And we're starting to fold everything in. So it's, it's a comprehensive approach versus a fragmented approach.
Makes a big difference.
And we're actively working on this whole sales force thing, which I don't fully understand. But we're bringing all of that together as well to really make it operate faster and easier for people.
Yes, our case management is all going into sales force, operationalizing, enabling care in communities where if, if there's a disturbance in the force, so if there's a tenant that has an issue or something that goes on, the system will automatically connect everybody that's working with that individual. And so instead of, and Sarah can, when she talks about her safety approach, when it happens now, it's like a scramble in self-overs. We're all talking to each other, calling back and forth. This will immediately bring the group together and has chat functions. And so you get the right people dealing with the issue at the right time versus, in some cases, the wrong people at the right time, which then makes it worse. And Sarah's got her...
So the, yes. Calls for service first. The suites are ahead of everyone else, seventeen in the last month. Most of, some of them are core follow-ups, just to kind of add to the more than airables we're saying about the clinicians at, at the suites. Our core unit is working hand in hand with these folks too. So, and I'm working pretty closely with the clinicians as well as far as calls for service, keeping up with the folks that, you know, what are we doing with, you know, the person that might be having, going spiraling right now? And what, let's wrap ourselves up in that person, make sure we're providing what we can. So...
So for perspective, if you remember when we took over, we were getting seventy calls a week.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Sometimes a day.
It's really, I mean, just diving into the data, kind of seeing just a few, you know, we're not getting the disturbances and the violent things that we were seeing before. So, not saying that, I mean, I don't know if they're going to change this, but, you know, we're, we're in a good place. So AMN had two, there were welfare checks. AMSA had one welfare check. The Lodge had one call, Hearthstone had one call. Village on Main had three parking problems, most likely due to construction and residents trying to figure things out. Briwood had zero, Fall River had fifteen. That was kind of a large number for them, and that was due to a resident issue that we were having, residents recalling. That problem, as you'll see next month, has pretty much gone away, which is good. That person to the better place and still living in property. For now. And then Spring Creek just had one, so not too bad for the month.
That's great.
Update you on our meth detectors. So right now, we only have one. I took one down today because there's no need for where we had it. So now, now we only have one that I'm monitoring. I think the next one we put in, we're waiting for a unit to, it's been cleaned and decon. Now we just need to go in. It needs to be released to us somewhere, but go in, rebuild it, and put it in at the suites. So the goal is to make sure we're putting in the clean units. So that's that. And then Walk Village on Main today, as Molly indicated, everything's beautiful there. Very impressed, the residents seem happy. I met one of our camera installers there to go over our cameras that have been in place. That was our first property that, and the cameras are in, and so...
Only took two years.
Dan Hill, our IT, or CDIT, the person is out on vacation this week, but he'll be back. I'm going to configure the cameras and kind of what, what we're doing with the ones on the outside and what we're looking at. Make sure we get staff trained to be able to, you know, utilize that system as well. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
What Sarah had, did mention is she's found a company that has, the cost of chasing is nothing, right? And she found a company that has a process where you spray stuff on it and it's fine. This company works with the FBI, Secret Service, all of our military branches, because they do this for other things. And... our military branches because they do this for other things. And, um, basically it lets you avoid the demolition. And we've now been connected to a company that has been actively utilizing this product. And so Sarah's gonna be, we're gonna run some tests. Once we run the test, that could theoretically change how we are approaching meth detectors because, um, you don't necessarily have the risk of having to demo an entire unit. And, um, it's, uh, it's crazy stuff because it even goes into drywall porous surfaces and it kills it on contact. And, and so this one company.
So it's Intelloguard and I actually met with, just kind of adding to what you're saying about the company that uses our product. So we met with Intelloguard, saw his product. Um, you know, we had internal discussion about training maintenance to utilize this product. And that's just with our turnover and the cost to train someone to do that is just too expensive. So we found a company that has been using their product for at least seven years now and they have not had, they've not had one demo. So, um, we did met them yesterday at, um, the Hearthstone, which still has a bathroom that's done. And we're waiting on a bid for them to come out and clean, clean what's needed and then also do AMSA's bathrooms. And so I'm really excited, moving forward. They, they seem like, and they, they're actually offering education to our staff, um, on meth, what you need, what you need to be prepared, you know, the word, all of this things. So they've been in the, in the industry for some time. So it's, it seems like a good thing.
If you, uh, if you find that really works and it's something that, a company you wanna go with, think about having an educational component for the, for the public. And because we have houses that have been down a long time.
Yes, yes. And, um, and working with, so I'm working very closely with code enforcement right now. So, um, we work in obviously the health and safety side of the, with the meth houses. So, um, having these companies, you know, literally meeting them, having the information and knowing that they do good work is definitely worth spreading.
Exactly. Thank you. Okay, is that it?
Sure.
A lot, but it's good.
Yeah, it's good.
And you're still upright. I don't know if it's the chairs or.
Yeah.
But, so, um, can I have a motion to adjourn the LHA.
Certainly.
It's gonna look like, uh, Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner. Why? Um, can I have, um, uh, oh, hi.
Hi.
All of us close to.